Alright ladies and gentlemen, please stand.
I'll place them there.
Join Vice Mayor Case with the pledge and then remain standing for our prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to develop and support what stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for the prayer, please.
Let us pray. God, we're so thankful for today. We're thankful for our community and the wonderful, wonderful folks that live here. Thankful for leaders who generously give of their time and do so many things that remain unthanked. And they do not get the praise that is due them for so much that they do for us here in Guthrie. So God, as we pray for this meeting tonight, we pray for the decisions made. We pray for the benefits that it will lead to for the citizens and those who live here. So God, in all things, we look to you for the strength and the guidance that we need each and every day. It's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you Pastor. Okay, I call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of October 20th. Second item is public comments, announcements, recognitions. We have none at this time. Third item on the agenda is our consent agenda, items A and B. Consent Agenda 3A is the approval of the minutes of the Special Public Works Authority Meeting of October 6th. And B is the approval of the minutes of the Public Works Authority Meeting, also of October 6th. Entertain a motion.
Move.
And a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Unanimous approval of those present to approve the consent agenda as presented. Item number four, discussion, possible action to approve change order number two. Decreasing the contract amount by $163.57. Contract awarded to Patriot to construction. Tenny?
Change order two will adjust all our final quantities to match all the field quantities for this project. It's also adding a item for sodding that was not in the original contract. And it'll be adding 40 days to the contract. The additional contract time, the 40 days, was needed to cover the time that the city had, where we'd stopped work for the COVID-19. And additional days was needed to work around our paving crews that we had in town. ODOT was in town, affected the project's timing a little bit. And then we also had our street CIP going on. So we kind of delayed some, some days there as well, moving the contractors around. And then some additional days was also due to us not being able to get water shut off and different timings during the project. And it delayed them on our end as well. The final, again, the final amount is a decrease on this project of $163.57.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve then change order number two. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Unanimous approval then to approve change order number two. Thank you, Tenny. For that, our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting is adjourned. And I open our city council meeting of Tuesday, October 20th. Consent Agenda Items A, B, and C. A is the approval of the minutes for a city council meeting of October 6th. B is the approval of a cooperative service field agreement between the city and the regional airport. C is the approval of assignment of property to Mathis Customs Homes to amend the name to include the Limited Liability Company, LLC. I'll entertain a motion then to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Unanimous approval then to approve all three consent agenda items. Item number three, discussion, possible action to approve resolution 2020-16. Approving and accepting the CDBG-19 Waterline Project. Tenny, are you covering that one too?
Kim.
Hi.
This is just the final step in closing out this grant. And authorizing the mayor to sign any remaining documents.
So moved.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Unanimous approval then to approve resolution 2020-16. Item number four, discussion, possible action to approve resolution 2020-18. Approve general policy requirements to appoint and to and continue service to the City of Guthrie Boards and Commissions.
The mayor requested this and the attorney wrote it, so each one of you can take your turn.
Really? You want to start off with this?
Sure, I'll start off. As Floyd Roy said, you brought to the attention that there was some conflict between the resolution that was passed in 2016 setting requirements to serve on boards. So this resolution is going to repeal resolution 2016-14 and this entire name and replace it with the language here. This is going to update the requirements to serve on boards. Ultimately, there was conflicts between some specific resolutions and agreements that existed in the city and that ordinance. And this, this brings it into the form, formally. It sets out the requirements. It does not set out another resolution or agreement that these are the requirements and so forth. And it also adds a seventh one. Due to special circumstances such as being limited to lack of qualified applicants, especially if there is desire for particular board permission. By a vote of at least five, seven of all members of the council, any of these requirements may be waived. And that's a, a new requirement. It didn't have before. And that's been in place and been challenged at times to find board members that is allowed to counsel and gradually waive and appoint board members.
Okay, thank you. Just to identify a couple of the inconsistencies that we had with our, the ordinance resolution that the council previously had, had approved. For instance, we said that any board or council member or committee member needed to be a resident of the City of Guthrie. And yet our airport board identifies that by their agreement, City of Guthrie or citizen of Logan County. Same thing pertained to the historical preservation. The representative from the Historical Society, their criteria was, again, a resident or business owner in the city. So again, we had a few, a little bit of inconsistency there. And then I think one of the other places we had term limits that were inconsistent. Our, our resolution identified two-year term limits. And in at least one, one instance, it's, it goes beyond the two-year term.
So basically this is a housekeeping.
It's a housekeeping, yeah. It's just to make sure that we're all consistent. And I just identified that just fairly recently.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval from all those present then to move forward with resolution 2020-18. Item number five, discussion and review of ordinance 3342. City Code of Ordinances Concerning Planning and Zoning. Dan, you have five minutes, I think it says in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Does it not say that?
Yes, it does. It does. Five-minute time limit.
Alright, there you go.
Yes. This ordinance tonight is just a, basically discussion and review. It'll be coming back at a future meeting for actual approval adoption. And that'll be kind of at the discretion of the council is how, I guess, in-depth we want to get or if there's any concerns. But this is the updated zoning code for the city. Our zoning code is fairly outdated. The most recent update dates back to the mid 90s. And that, and a lot of ordinances and regulations in there date back probably to the original zoning code back in the 60s. So this is a wholesale, if you want to say, update of the entire zoning code. Tonight, I'm going to try to hit the high spots of what's changing, so there's an understanding of, of kind of what's going on. I will say that most of it is a change in a direction to bring things up to more of what we've been doing versus trying to put more regulations or regulate different uses more so than we currently are. The elements such as like mobile home, RV parks, the communication, telecommunications facilities, landscaping, just like we had with our previous ordinance for the design, they're actually in the municipal code. Those are traditionally in a zoning code. So this will also, through the ordinance, be moving those to be within our zoning code versus just separate chapters of the municipal code. So with that, I'm going to go over and I'll try to be as, as quick as possible. But you know, there is a lot that is, that's transpiring with this. But also, I, you know, hope that all of you have looked over it and that. So again, at the end, if you have any questions, we can go over it. If not, I'll be looking to, again, take any comments, concerns that can be brought back for discussion at another meeting. If not, we can just look, move forward to, you know, maybe look at the next meeting for adoption. So it's up to the council. But one of the big changes-
Well, this is a, I mean, there's, there's, there's over 100 pages here.
Yes, there is. That's why I was saying it, it, it's going to be up to the council on how many meetings they want to take to discuss it. Tonight, my goal was to do an overview, so everybody understood what was going on. And if it takes 10 meetings, two meetings, six meetings, whatever. I will say that we had five meetings at the planning commission to go through the code and that. So if it takes the same at the council, then so be it. But tonight, again, it's just an introduction to kind of let everybody know what's going on. With that, the, one of the bigger elements or changes is going to be in the zoning districts. There's going to be the elimination of some zoning districts and the addition of some zoning districts. Most of this comes from our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan had identified at least two, if you want to say, tiers of multifamily. It also identified large lot type development and that. Currently in our zoning code, we basically have about two, well, we really have two residential. We have single family and multifamily. That's it. Nothing in between. With the diversity of the city that we have in terms of land uses, we definitely don't need a bunch, but we need more than what we have. So one of the things would be adding a residential estates. This will be a large lot zoning district. This will be for any lot that's one acre or above. It will still remain a single-family zoning, meaning you can only have one dwelling unit. But one of the other things that it will do, and this kind of ties into what we had discussions with the accessory structures, is it's going to actually allow animal privileges. Currently, our R1 zoning in most everything to the south and even the west of large lots in the city are, are zoned R1 and technically can't have animals. Most of what's out there is legal nonconforming, meaning it was there prior to annexation. But this will allow either, if somebody, you know, comes in and currently has a property that's two acres and they want a couple horses, they could rezone to RE and actually have those privileges in that. So that's probably the biggest addition with the RE is to allow the animal privileges that currently aren't allowed under the R1 single family. It will also amend our existing R2 general residential to a more limited multifamily. So it will be more to where you see duplex to maybe triplexes or at most four units on a property. And then it'll add a new R3, which will be our multifamily. And so that'll be the basically high-density, high-end in that. So it gives us another tier of multifamily in there, so we aren't always having an open-ended R2. It could be anywhere from, you know, two dwelling units or four dwelling units an acre to 30. This gives a little bit in-between. The R2 that we have in and around the downtown and that typically has duplex, maybe triplex type uses. And so this would fit well with keeping it to that level of density. And then again, when we have a more, larger apartment complexes and that, they would be in the R3. We will also add a mixed-use zoning district. Currently, there's what I would call a somewhat idea of what it was intended to be mixed use. There's what we call C1, which is entrepreneurial district that actually exists. There's no property in town that's zoned that. It was a few years ago. I don't remember the exact date, but it was in there. This will put in a true mixed use where you can have residential and commercial on the same property, whether it's on a horizontal, meaning a building of residential and a building of commercial, or vertical, meaning all in the building, where you traditionally have, like our downtown, where you have the commercial on the bottom and residential on top. So it'll allow for those mixed uses to exist on the same property in either manner. Another addition will be public facilities. We don't technically have a zoning district that would allow for public facilities such as city hall, the schools, or anything like that. So we're adding a zoning to that. So, and, and the big change with that is currently, whether it's city hall or even our fire station, they end up getting put on properties that are technically zoned R1 or central business district or something like that. With the public facilities, it can also identify not only public property, but it will then allow more conducive development for that. It would develop more like a commercial where you don't have designated setbacks and, and all of that.
I don't see that in here, the public.
The public facilities?
Yeah.
It's under new zoning districts. I'm pretty sure.
Oh, I've got the new elements, sections, maybe I'm-
Yeah. It should be, it's a very small section. It's at the end because basically it says it's for, again, for public uses. And that the requirements in it will follow what's typical in a commercial zoning district for setbacks, lock coverage, that type of thing. So it's a very small section. And then we're eliminating the R6 and combining it with the R4. Right now, we have two zoning districts, R6 and the R4. One's mobile home and the other one's base, was, heck, I forget now. But anyway, we're putting the manufactured homes and like modular homes, mobile homes, all under one zoning district.
Dan, could I ask one question?
Yes.
By adding the public facilities?
Yes.
Will they have to rezone?
No.
So like, right now, you can go to residential or a public facility, fire station?
Yes.
School. So will they continue to be able to go in R1?
Yes. But there's the option that we have, so if we want to even do parks and that, to put it under a public facilities.
Okay.
Yeah. But from a land use standpoint and a permitted use standpoint, that's not going to change. Yeah.
I didn't want us to have to rezone property, did you?
No, we don't have to. Yeah. And it's the same with, you know, even like the RE. It's going to be at the discretion of a property owner. If they have, again, an acreage and they want to go and maybe have animals and that, they can come in and rezone to RE. And so then they would be able to have the rights under that zoning district. But we're not going to go out there and force them to, if they're over an acre lot, to rezone to RE or, you know, even like in the downtown or something with mixed use. It's going to be at availability. Basically, what we have now is, you know, will be in a lot of cases, legal nonconforming. But it gives us that option to move forward to implementing more of what our comprehensive plan has. And again, a lot of the land uses that are more desirable for a lot of the people. I've actually gotten a lot of, well, I don't know if we want to say a lot, but a decent amount of residents that I talked to that are very happy about the RE because it's going to allow them to have animals or continue to have animals and not have that legal nonconforming hanging over their head in that. So again, a lot of this isn't going to necessarily be, you know, it gets adopted and we start doing these wholesale changes. They're going to be in there for the availability. So as we move down the road, eventually we can get it all caught up. And, and as I indicated, the final thing on the, on the zoning districts is the elimination of the CE1, which is the entrepreneurial district. And again, the mixed-use district is going to serve the same purpose. Actually, it will serve a much better purpose than the CE1 did in that. So there was no need to keep that, so we're eliminating that. And that's the big changes on the residential part in terms of the zoning districts. Some of the other elements that are being added that aren't currently in the code, there's a temporary use permit section. The intent of this was, again, not to try to over-regulate some of the uses, but put in a, an ability to help these uses. There's been already a couple times since I've been here where a temporary use permit would have helped some residents to do a true temporary land use. Currently, we don't have that ability. So, and also on the commer, or even on the, if you want to say, commercial end, if somebody wants to go and sit, and sell Christmas trees or something on a vacant lot for 30 days, we can actually, through the temporary use permit process, give them a temporary use permit and they can show they have a permit to be there and take care of that. But obviously, we also have a way to make sure it doesn't become permanent in that. And if you notice in there, I put a stipulation that if you have a use that is going to be less than 72 hours, you don't need a temporary use permit. And one of the things that I was thinking about was, we have a lot of people who will pull their truck over, like at the Dollar General parking lot, have watermelons and sell them on a weekend. We don't want to discourage that and I don't, and definitely don't want to over-regulate that. So if they want to come in or even pull a food truck up on a weekend and sit on a property and that and sell, that's fine, you know. This is more for the big events and long-term stuff. Because the other thing that it does is it acts similar to what we have for an exclusive use permit on public property. This will do the same thing on private property. So for instance, if we have a really large concert event at the drive-in theater where there could be 5,000 or 8,000 people there or something. This is a process in which we can permit that and more importantly, get the police department, fire department, you know, those involved and everybody communicating, so everything goes off without a hitch and everybody's understanding of what's going, rather than just a major event pop up on a weekend. And that's really the intent of that. It's not to try to regulate every little temporary use that's out there. But we also have instances where some residents may want to, for whatever reason, need to, on their property, live in their RV for maybe three or four weeks or something because they have some issues for whatever reason. Through this process, we can say, yeah, we can go ahead and do that and, you know, you can have a temporary use permit. So anyway, that's kind of the idea of that. The home occupation is just, it, right now, we only have a definition in our code. That's it. This kind of elaborates on that. But it's not going to change anything that we already consider or allow a home occupation. It's, my five minutes are up. The, it's going to, again, put a, put some criteria in there so we can make sure that a home occupation remains a true home occupation and we don't have a commercial operation, if you want to say, in a residential area or a home. That's really what that's doing and, and nothing more. One of the other additions that I think is going to be very valuable to our community and again, have a lot of people that have already inquired about it and positive, is the allowance of accessory dwelling units. And it's pretty much what it says, is it will allow you to have a little home or living area in your backyard in that. So whether, you know, you have family that wants to stay. One of the things that has been more common in a lot of parts of the US and even here is people have family whose parents, grandparents or that are getting at an age where they can't live by themselves, but they can't afford to maybe necessarily be in assisted living or a nursing home. This gives an option for them to still live on the same property, be close to the family, but not necessarily in the same house. And you commonly hear it as a grand, grand, you know, mother's flat or, or that. But the technical name, if you want to say, is accessory dwelling unit. So that would be allowed. There are stipulations on the size and location and that, just like we had with any other accessory dwelling. But it will, it will introduce the ability to have that accessory unit to be lived in. And it's going to have to be architecturally compatible with the home. So if you read the stipulations, you can't simply have an RV or you can't simply have some, you know, kind of shed or what to use as a dwelling unit. There are some stipulations that go with that. Another thing, and this has been talked about briefly and, and it's been held off because it was part of the code, but I know the council or at least a couple of them at one time had talked about looking at this, is the residential short-term rentals and bed and breakfast. This basically encompasses what Airbnb's and, and a lot of that. There's, it will add that section. And in a nutshell, you probably read it. If not, I'll, I'll give a little bit of a nutshell of what's going on. Again, I tried to do it in a manner to put some regulations in there, but not over-regulate it. I'll be the first one to say that Airbnb's bed and breakfast are a huge asset to our community. They're very important. So we don't want to over-regulate them. But at the same time, obviously, we don't necessarily want to have a free-for-all. The key with that land use comes with the single-family area. That's where it's probably most critical to have some type of regulations in. Because a lot of people don't necessarily buy into a single-family neighborhood with the expectation that they're going to have a vacation rental next to them with a bunch of people every, you know, weekend or every week. And that, once you get to the multifamily area, it's not much of a concern because in a multifamily area, you can have multi, you know, more than one unit, that type of thing. So the approach I took was to break it up into kind of a two-tiered thing. And, and I'll tell you, my, my rationale was, currently in our code, a single family is considered anybody who's related by marriage, adoption or otherwise, or five unrelated people. So you could have five people who are just friends, buddies. They can go rent a house right now and that, and have, you know, and by code, they're legal. So what I did is took that and said, from an Airbnb or a bed and breakfast standpoint, if you're renting strictly to maybe, you know, more, no more than five people or, you know, a couple, literally two people, or a family on a weekend, it should be a permitted use. Because from a land use standpoint, it's no different than five unrelated people being there all the time, whether you talk traffic, whether you talk, you know, any impacts to the neighborhood. So that was kind of the criteria that was there to say, okay, at that point, you know, it's a permitted use in the R1. If you're more than that, then you get into the special use permit where if you're, again, going to have large groups of 10 or 12 people that are going to be staying there on a regular basis, then it requires a special use permit. One of the other things that I added is what's called home sharing, which basically is you live in the house, but there may be two weeks out of the year in which you want to rent it because you're going to be on vacation and you can get a little extra income. That is in there and that would be a permitted use as well because it's a limited time and it isn't on a regular basis. So after that, for whether it's a bed and breakfast or a, or any type of Airbnb short-term rental, that threshold is five. Anything above that would require a special use permit. All of those uses would be a permitted use within the multifamily areas. And again, it's really to the R1. The other thing it would require is registration with the city on your Airbnb, B&B, your bed and breakfast, that type of thing. And there's, there's a couple reasons for that. One, that is a way we find out what they're disclosing they're doing. If they're saying, yeah, we're only going to rent to five people at a time. We have something that says, okay, you're a permitted use, no problem. The other thing it does is it obviously gives us the information to contact the management company or the owner. So if there are issues, we can communicate. We don't always have to just go and, you know, issue a citation or something. We can call them and say, hey, you know, you said you were only going to have five people here at one time. It seems like we're getting large groups, you know, kind of what's going on and we get that communication there. It works similar to, you know, most communities that have a business license. It would just be to this area. So that was really the two that were to it. Now, the fees that I put in there that's associated with it, that's more or less what's common. If we want to reduce that, eliminate that, I don't really care, honestly. Because, you know, we don't have that many bed and breakfasts in town and we, it's not that much that if we had no fees to it, it's not like, you know, we would be expending a lot of, if you want to say, labor to it in that. So that's something that can be discussed. Now, on that, I know there's a couple people here tonight to talk about that, so, you know, they'll have some input on that. And they're here because I did contact the association, Bed and Breakfast Association, because I wanted them to be aware. But also, I'm hoping that when it's all done, again, we have that communication to where we can all work together to make sure that this works well. And again, it remains a valuable asset to our community.
Hey, Dan, is the five people realistic? I have no clue.
Honestly, I, you know-
Doesn't seem like it is.
Well, no, and, and that's the thing is, and, and that's why really that aspect is really up to what we want as a community and what we feel is going to be, you know, a good number that isn't going to have a negative impact to a single-family area. Like I said, I did that because that's what single-family is classified as. If we want to say 10, 2, whatever, that's, again, that's all up to what we want to do and, and what we feel may be that threshold of acceptable and then maybe having too much of an impact in a single-family area. So-
Because I can see if you had a four-bedroom and you had four couples, there's eight.
Yeah. No, no, right. And, and that's it. And, and again, it's not saying that it isn't going to be allowed. It just simply says you need to go through a special use permit process in a single-family area. But again, if we want to raise that threshold to four units, eight people, or whatever, that's fine. I mean, you know-
And that's when an Airbnb is leasing for a longer-term?
No, this would be any, any time.
Anytime.
Yeah, because the, it falls under a-
Had you leasing your house when you go on vacation?
Right. Because, because a short-term rental is considered anything less, a rental that's less than 30 days. So whether it's 29 days at one time or one weekend or one day, all of that falls under a short-term rental. So whether it's 29 days at one time or one weekend or one day, all of that falls under a short-term rental. So if you're doing anything that, again, you're renting by the day, every weekend or whatever, it falls under those regulations. And as you see in there, it does not include hotels, motels, that's a whole different thing in that. Cause anything beyond 30 days is just a regular rental, you know, just like you would be in your single-family where they're year month-to-month. So that's why it's 30 days and that's typical in most codes for a temporary use, anything less than 30 days, even on that side. Uh, and, and again, we can come back to that, uh, and that, because we do have people here talking. Medical marijuana is another addition. This will not change whatsoever. The only thing we currently have is a determination that was made at the time that this became, you know, allowed by state law. And so all I've done is put it in the code. So instead of having it a determination based on similar uses, it's actual code section. But it's not going to change in any manner. You can still have a grow facility in either the agricultural area or in a building in the industrial area. Dispensaries are strictly in the commercial areas, the central business district, C2, C3 areas. I think I made it a special use permit in the C1. And then the extraction processing type uses are strictly in the industrial area. So that's exactly how we've been doing it. We haven't had any issues, any complaints or, and that, so that's staying the same. And as I indicated before, uh, we're going to be moving landscaping, mobile home and recreational vehicle parts, signs and telecommunications into the zoning code. Those currently exist in separate areas of the municipal code. Uh, there are some minor changes to those areas, uh, not, I wouldn't call them significant. Uh, I, well, I should say, I did rewrite the mobile home and recreational vehicle park only because it was so outdated. There's, it wasn't realistic to have those developments under our current regulations. So it brought them in the line of what's more typical, uh, in that. Basically, it's going to require them to come in, have a site plan that shows what they're doing. It'll go to the planning commission for their review and it'll get approved in that manner. Uh, the telecommunication towers, there was some changes to that because once again, ours was done, I think in the early 2000s. And, and I will tell you that it's typical of most ordinances in that timeframe. It was a, we are scared about what's going to happen and we want to make an ordinance to almost prohibit it. Uh, in that, because there was excessive setbacks that were put in and that. And it was typical of that area or that timeframe, that air, uh, in that. This brings it into a more, if you want to say, current timeframe, because now we have a true understanding that when you put that tower up, uh, it's not necessarily going to fall over. It's going to fall over, you know, it has less likely to fall over than a building that you build, uh, on the property line. So there were some changes for setback requirements. The other aspect of it was honestly, I could not figure out how the cell towers were to be approved. Because it alluded to the fact that staff would approve it, but it didn't clearly say that. And so what I created was a process to where if you, if you're in the commercial or industrial areas, it's a permitted use. But if you're in a multifamily area, I believe, and one of the other ones, it's a special use permit, uh, in that. And that's what I would say is pretty typical in most codes, uh, these days in that. So that's probably the biggest changes with that. Landscaping, there was a couple of minor changes, uh, in that. Under the interpretation and unlisted uses, once again, this is a practice that happens, but we don't have a code change. And what that means is if somebody comes in and says, I want to do X use and it isn't identified in our land use table, the planning director, zoning administrator, whatever you want to call it, says, all right. So they make it look to say, all right, what's the most similar type use and the similar type zoning district that this would be in? It makes a determination to say, yes, your use is similar to these uses, thus you can be in the C2 or whatever. That happens now. This just puts it in the actual code format and puts it in our code to say the planning director has that ability, uh, in that. Outdoor storage and display is another one. We have it all over the place, uh, in that, and, and we don't really have a lot of regulation on it. And my idea was more, again, to try to make sure that some of maybe the troubled properties, we have codes to help make sure they either don't remain troubled or don't become troubled. And what I mean by is you just have a, you know, hodge, almost an accumulation of material that either isn't, uh, have fencing to, you know, obscure it from view or isn't a.
That's your time.
I was going to say, this really must be my. Doesn't have it in an area and that, so it was really, it was really what that intent. I, I'll be honest, it isn't something that we're going to strongly go after most.
So it's just like the boarding thing and?
Yeah, kind of, because even on the commercial end, it puts some stip, yeah. It, it, not so much residential, but even on the commercial side, we have sometimes, uh, outdoor display or even storage. And what it's saying is, you know, if you're going to display merchandise, that's fine, but you can't put it in the street. You can't have it in the sidewalk, you can't have it in the right-of-way in that. And if you're truly going to have like a contractor's yard, you're going to need to put fencing around it to make sure that it's viewed or, you know, that you can't see basically all your stuff in there in that. And that's really what it's, it's doing. We don't really have a big problem with it, but again, it's like everything. Once those issues may come up, if we don't have a place in our code to regulate it or, or, uh, that has things, it's hard for us to go after them and say, yours isn't, you know, in compliance with code because there is no code. So that's really what we're trying to do with that. Not necessarily, again, that we're going to go after a lot of people. Uh, minor variances, uh, it would be an addition in our board of adjustment and it would allow the planning director, me, to do administrative minor, or minor variances. But it is very limited. It would be limited to front, rear or side setbacks and no more than 10%. So what that means is if somebody comes in and they go and they put their house and then we realize that maybe through a survey or something, they're encroaching maybe a foot into the front setback. It would allow me to say, okay, yeah, it, it was, you know, yeah, we can go ahead and approve that. It's no issue and then we don't have to send them to the board of adjustment and go through that whole process. But again, it would be limited to strictly the front or the setbacks. Everything else would still have to go to the, um, the board of adjustment. Another addition is minor subdivisions. Uh, we currently have where we review lot splits, but technically we don't have a code section for it. And so this would be the code section that would have us to review those lot splits. And, and the critical part of that is, is unfortunately, we have lots that are created that are undersized or don't have access. And then they get sold and somebody buys it and they come in and we tell them, you can't build on that. And they're kind of like, why? And I'm like, well, it's not a legal lot. And so this helps to, you know, do both. It helps to make sure that we're getting lots that are going to be legal. And again, the person that's doing it to make sure that they have a lot that they're going to be able to, uh, sell. The other thing is, is it talks about in there where we have some instances where there's a number of the original subdivided lots, the little 25 by 140 lots, where they may have eight or nine of those. And they want to reconfigure them into two or three lots or whatever. This basically says you can do that. You don't have to go through a subdivision process, even though you may be taking eight lots. As long as the end result doesn't have more than eight lots of what you're doing, you're fine. Because, uh, you know, what you have there is what you have, it's a reconfiguration. So it's basically saying you don't have to go through a formal subdivision process because you're already dealing with platted lots. So that wraps up that part. Now, some of the, the, again, one of the big changes is going to be the elimination of residential uses in commercial districts. So what this is saying is if you're in a C2, C1 or anywhere, you can't build a single-family residence anymore. It's not good land use practice. It runs into a lot of issues we have because just like when somebody buys in a single-family area, they want to have the thoughts of this is going to be a single-family area. We're not going to have multifamily units, we're not going to have a. The commercial side is the same thing. When somebody buys a commercial lot, they have the expectation that everything around it's going to be commercial. So when you got that auto body shop there and you're in a C2 and you're legal and that guy next to you comes in and builds a house and starts complaining about your noise, we're trying to prevent that. It's just not good land use practice from overall. It also ought, to be honest with you, probably takes up some of our commercial property that otherwise could be at a higher use, uh, in that. Much like everything, what's there is legal, non-conforming, it's not going to change. It could be there for the next hundred years, it's just going.
You do realize that the entirety of South Division is pretty much C2.
Yes.
So.
Right.
That's how they just zone the whole area.
Right, right. And, and I'll be, and I should say is one of the things that we could look at, you know, is with, with the comprehensive plan and some of that is, is looking at land uses. I will say that, uh, divi, along Division, but even south into, um, the city, when that was annexed, it should have been left agged. They zoned it R1 unfortunately, and it hindered a lot of properties. And just along the South Division, the long-term is commercial, but right now, a lot of it is residential, uh, in that. So it's not, you know, and if that's something that everybody's comfortable with, hey, I'm, I'm not going to beat that one to death. It's, it's just not good land use practice to continually put that type of in that. If you're going to go down that road, you should look at mixed use. It, it works much better and you can get things taken care of more better than a lot by lot where you have commercial, residential, commercial. But it's not something if, if, if.
But when they annexed it, they just made it all C2.
That part, right. And just like the South, they just made it all R1. There, there should have been a little bit more thought into it as far as the actual zoning, uh, in that because it has more and more now become a problem. Obviously, we're trying to take care of that, but yeah. The adult uses section, believe it or not, we have one. But that was, that was a section where if you read it, I don't think a lot of people understood what was, uh, what it required. We actually had the city clerk, chief of police and a number of other people that were on a board that had to make a decision for this type of stuff. And so, again, back in the day, that was probably okay. The, the critical issue to adult uses is like any city, is location. And here, it's still saying you can only have it in the industrial area. You still have to have separation from any church, from any thing, you know, uh, school and that. But it's taken a lot of the other stuff that again, having to go through, you know, a licensing process. You look at it from a simple land use standpoint and saying, yes, it should be appropriate in the I-1 or I-2 and, and have separation.
Apparently we don't have it.
No, we do, but, but there's a lot of what I would call archaic conditions attached to it. It's an actual formal licensing that has to go in front of a board.
But we have anybody licensed for it?
No, oh yeah, we don't have any right now that I'm, right. And so, and the likelihood of having a lot of them probably is never going to happen. There could be one that comes along.
Let's hope so.
Yeah.
That's, well, Steve's.
Yeah, and as I indicated, the mobile home and recreational vehicle parks, again, there was a lot of stuff in there that was from long ago, uh, you know, I, one of the things I kind of realized with Guthrie is I think there was a lot of cut and paste back in the day from different places. And so this makes it a little bit more, not only easier to reprocess, but makes it more, I guess, practical when you're putting in an RV or a mobile home park in that. Uh, and so there's still a review in that, it just takes out a lot of the old requirements that really aren't applied. Parking requirements and standards, that's another area that is very outdated and has been a concern. And to be honest with you, I can tell you probably hasn't been enforced for many years because if it had, we would have almost our entire town covered in nothing but parking. Because per our current code, it requires one parking space for every 150 square feet of floor area for most retail or commercial. That is very intensive parking. The industry standard is one to 300 in that, so we're almost double what any other place would require. Uh, I'll be honest with you, I am an advocate that we should get rid of minimum parking standards altogether. I think it's a highly overrated aspect of zoning, but that's me. But I did adjust our.
You got that in red later on, right?
Yeah, I, I adjusted ours to be in more, if you want to say, typical. The problem with parking is it's all based on a maximum usage either once a day, once a month or once a year. So you end up getting way more parking than you're ever going to use. That's area that could otherwise be used for more commercial building, uh, you know, and that. Plus it adds cost to development, obviously, when you're putting in a lot of parking you otherwise don't need to use. So I also added a lot more land uses that we typically have in town or will see we have in town and, and put the, again, if you want to say, industry standard. One thing I, I would like to see is maybe you look at increasing it to maybe one to 600 for retail. Go almost that middle road where we're a little less than a lot of places, but not quite to the point of none. But again, that, that's something you guys can talk about and if you're not comfortable with it, I understand, uh, in that. The residential dimensional standards, that's another area where ours are somewhat restrictive. Our current lot coverage is 25% in the R1. Typical lot coverage in a single-family area is anywhere from 35% to 50%, depending on jurisdiction. The most are at the 35 to 40%. I recommended increasing ours to 35%. So again, we're not going to that top end, but it will help to allow a little bit more because we do run into that with our more modern homes that we have. And you start putting accessory structures even of a moderate size, it gets up on that 25% really quick with small lots.
So what do we have now?
25%.
Period.
Yeah, on an R1, right. So no matter if it's 7,000 square feet or 70 acres, it's 25.
So we were talking about those type of homes that they were starting to build in Edmund, me, you and James were, and I think Cheryl at one point. What do you call, I don't remember what you call them. They, they take the whole lot, basically.
Oh yeah, almost like zero lot, minor townhomes, yeah, yeah.
So zero.
Well, there, there's a couple of things with that. Usually with those, they'll go through a plan development process. And through that process, then we can get exceptions to lot coverage setbacks. And so you can get your townhome patio homes type of development, much like, you know, we've talked about briefly about ideal homes coming in and that. But for your standard R1 lot that's out there and that, you know, it's 25%. And like I said, you know, there's a lot of people that have a small house and they want to put an addition on and we say, well, you're over your lot coverage. So 35% gets us to where a lot of those can have a decent sized home or addition to the existing, but not make it to where you're covering a significant amount of the lot, uh, in that. So that was probably the biggest change. Well, the other change is, is there's actually identification of densities in there. Meaning that we've identified densities within each zoning district. And I'll get to that because offhand, I forget what I put for a couple of them.
That's probably another meeting, right?
Well, yeah, and I'll get into that further, but it add, it added densities in that. The R1, I will tell you, is typical of a 6,000 square foot lot. It comes to like 7.25, uh, dwelling units per acre. But it's, it's basically would be one house on a 6,000 square foot lot. But it also goes in the multifamily area and that's where I was saying earlier with the limited multifamily. So we have that tier to say, okay, we're only going to expect this amount of density. If you want to go to that, we're going to the next step, which is R3.
How much, how much more time do you have in this overview?
I'm almost done.
Good.
The last thing I want to say is, is the, uh, overall, there was some other changes in those areas and I'm not going to go over it because most of those were insignificant for that. But it just was standard verbiage that you have in zoning codes and the law, or with state law and that about that type of stuff, uh, in that. The last thing I was just going to add is Section 11, which is the plan development, as you probably saw, had no red lines in it. And that's because you guys already adopted a updated version. And then Section 6, which was the residential, commercial and industrial design standards, the only thing that's changing is the, in there, is identifying the new zoning districts that would come in, uh, based on the zoning code. So again, we don't have an R6, but we have an RE, so that's basically the change. Otherwise, everything else remains as it was adopted a couple of weeks ago.
I'd like to go through your red line part on the next meeting or the one after.
Yeah, no, and that's why I said, it, it's up to you guys to how much you want to go and, and, and that. This again, was to throw kind of everything at you, have an opportunity for the council to kind of understand where some things are, read over everything and then if there's certain areas we want to delve into, we will.
Okay, all right. Um, any initial questions right now?
No, I made my, I had a statement and made it.
Okay, uh, there's a couple of individuals that want to speak to, or at least had identified. Gary, um, you want to speak at all on behalf of the B&Bs or you want to give some, some input here? Um, you're listed down here and talk about.
About what?
And give me the opportunity. Identify yourself and your, and your address and any comments that you wanted to, um, address the council with.
Okay, my name is Gary Good, 323 West Cleveland Avenue. And currently the president of the Bed and Breakfast Association of Guthrie. And, um, yeah, Dan and I were, were messaging back, emailing and, and he was kind enough to give me the information about what was being proposed. And, uh, it was kind of quick, so we didn't have a lot of time to get together. But, uh, I was able to get with each of the B&Bs except for one, uh, to get input. And, uh, basically, um, Bed and Breakfast in Guthrie, and Guthrie is known as the bed and breakfast capital of Oklahoma because we say so, but. capital of Oklahoma because we say so, but we really are-
Self-proclaimed, yeah, it's all right.
And, you know, it's been a challenge over the years. I've been, I've been a member, I don't know exactly, might I'm going to guess 11, 12 years-ish, something like that. And I've seen as many as 14 Bed and Breakfast in our association, and right now, we're at seven. And, you know, it's, it's a struggle to keep people, to keep their Bed and Breakfast open because it's, it's really easy to just rent it out as an apartment. And I've really fought hard to try to keep them, keep our numbers up. For one thing, I mean, it's great for the town, it's a historic town, and having Bed and Breakfast and having that designation is, is a pretty cool thing. It also brings in tax revenue to the city for all those that are not apartments and they're B&amp;Bs. As a group, we all contribute to the hotel motel tax in town. We collect it, and some of us are on time, some of us aren't. But we, we do that. And we have our membership dues, we have an annual dues that, that to be members, and, you know, we take care of all that.
So what is your input into the item to be discussed today?
The overall input that I've got, and it's, it's been pretty quick, is that please don't regulate us more. It's hard enough to keep this going as it is. And I do understand, I, I know with Airbnb's coming to be, that there's, there's some areas, and Kim and I have spoken about that, there's some areas that, that might need to be examined. And I will tell you, I'd, I'd be happy to come in and any other members of B&amp;B Association, but I'd be happy to sit down with the committee and talk about how to help that situation because I'm pretty familiar with it, more so now than I was. And maybe instead of having an overall regulation, and, and I'm really for less regulations, as long as it's not broke, why mess with it? And I don't think we've had problems. I haven't heard about problems. So that's what I would suggest is that we please not have more dues and fees for B&amp;Bs. I mean, it's been a struggle during the COVID. Thank goodness for Moby coming into town and doing long-term rentals for some of us. But if, if not for that, a lot of them would probably turn into apartments because, you know, it's tough. So adding regulations, adding costs, and annual renewing of licenses, all, all of us that are in the association now have a city permit that was signed by the city manager. Mine was by Matt Mueller, and it's on our wall, and it says hotel motel, and it, and it basically registers us with the city, so we recognize and they recognize that we pay city hotel motel tax along with sales tax. So that's really all I have to say. I'd, I'd be happy to get with you. I just would, from our association request, that we not be bogged down with more regulations and, and licenses and so forth. Thank you.
Okay. Gary, I think you're going to see more of these come through council on this, more meetings on this, and you probably should be at them.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I just didn't know about it until a couple of days ago.
Yeah, good.
Get a workshop together or something.
I'd be happy to be a part of that.
Yeah.
I'd like, Kim, Mayor, just to add to the record. The current proposal would actually be less regulatory than currently. Currently, in our zoning code, all we have is bed and breakfast. So anything that is a bed and breakfast or similar type use falls under that, and in every instance would require a special use permit. So technically, every bed and breakfast out there that's in a single-family area requires a special use permit.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so this would be less regulation. But again, we can adjust.
Okay, all right.
Is that the permit that we all have?
No, you have your permit from them. Most of them do not have the required-
Never heard about it.
That's the permit just for the hotel motel.
Yeah, that's why I was saying it's-
Yeah, and I can tell you the Airbnb's, I don't know where they're located, and yeah, they haven't registered.
They haven't. Well, that's something we can talk about at the workshop.
Yeah, we plan on getting to that, too. The Airbnb's, okay?
Feel free to holler.
Thank you, Gary. But as identified, this, this is not a one-time discussion of this ordinance. A huge ordinance, we've got a lot to, to get our hands around.
Absolutely.
So be a part of it, okay? Becky?
I really don't have anything to add to what Gary said.
Okay, all right.
No council comments either, huh?
Any other questions now from the council? Okay, well, just one thing, as I was trying to follow your overview, at least in my perspective, you didn't follow what was in the same sequence that was, that was given to us here.
I went by the sequence I essentially had on the staff report. Yeah, not necessarily what was in the sections of the code.
Okay, well, so I was having a little bit more difficulty following that.
That's why I asked to go through the red on that.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea, just to hit, hit the red, which identifies all the things that are changing. And so, for instance, let's just talk about the parking, uh, parking's not spaces, but the parking driveways, the surface, surface to surface. So anybody that, that is already, everybody that does, has gravel driveway to a paved street, that's all grandfathered in, right?
Yeah, because actually, by current code, they're required to have a pavement or asphalt, hard surface.
But that was grandfathered in then, too.
Right, right. So, and like you said, we have many in town that still have gravel, and they're legal nonconforming, grandfathered in, and as long as it's maintained in an acceptable manner, they can have it.
And that doesn't change even if the ownership of the property changes?
No, because we don't really have anything in there. There's always in any code, you can have those little things that say if ownership changes, the property has to come up.
That's what I was wondering.
Right. But otherwise, no. It's just like a permit. If you have a special use permit on a particular property, as long as that use is maintained, regardless of ownership, that's still a valid-
So why haven't we gone down that road?
We could.
If, if, if we want to have surface to surface-
Yes.
Then, then the opportunity presents itself when there's a change of ownership. I can understand the grandfathering in of the present owner, but the opportunity changes, it seems to me. And if that's our end, end goal, is to have asphalt to asphalt, for instance, it, it seems that we ought to have some provision that pushes that.
Yeah, and there, well, and there's a couple of things with that, of course. We don't always know when ownership changes in that. And so, if somebody buys a house and they're there for, you know, let's say a year or two, and then they come in and we find out about it, it's hard for us to say, well, now you've been there for two years with that, now you have to change it in that. So there's a lot of those things that's hard to determine when that legal nonconforming is gone, or when that ownership changed and all that, because we just don't have a lot. And then also, when you're looking at that, if you're going down that road, you know, a lot of times you're going either all or nothing to some extent because with a lot of properties, you know, the driveway may be the least of the nonconforming uses and that. So, I mean, you can write any code the way it is, but a lot of times, in most cases, because it can be burdensome on some owners to have to bring a lot of things up to code, a requirement being, you know, at the time of sale in that. Because even like a house right now, if you are nonconforming with setbacks, as long as you're not doing more than 50% of a remodel and that, you don't have to bring it up to code in terms of setbacks and the whole thing. You only do what, whatever you're doing is up to code in that. So you have other elements that enter into that equation as well.
All right. Let me, let me throw a real-time example. I'll throw my property out here, for example. I'm off of Division, I got a half a mile private road, and I've got about 350 feet of gravel going into my main property, but I also still have this half-mile road. So what do you do in that case?
I think the requirement is, is-
Mayor says you got blacktop.
No, I was just saying, it's even less, no, it's even less than that.
The requirement is, is just a, a very short section-
It is.
-that matches up.
Right, currently-
Not the old driveway.
No.
But no, the private road matches Division.
Yeah.
So, but that's what I'm saying. So, but off of our private road is where my driveway comes.
Yeah, and it's 100 feet or something like that.
15.
15 feet.
Actually, yeah. Because what the code says is the first 15 feet on your property needs to be-
But I own the road.
No, but what I'm saying is from the right away. Right. But what I'm saying is, the point at which your property connects to the right away, that driveway, 15 feet in, has to be hard surface. From that point, all it has to be is an all-weather surface. So again, if you have 100 feet of driveway to your house, only the front 15 feet have to be paved.
So let me back up again. Our private road, which is asphalt, okay, or was until people thought it was a public road, okay? You know, and we do, we do maintain it the best we can at this point. There's two of us that use, three actually, that would use it, okay? It's about probably 300 to 400 feet from Division before you even get to my driveway off of my road that I've built.
Right, because I think it does say off the street, because I don't remember-
It does say off the street.
Yeah, I think it says off the right away, not another property.
Yeah, so it would be off of Division.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's why I was saying the 15 feet off of Division would be required, and after that, it doesn't have to be.
But that's why I wanted to bring that up, because there's going to be a lot of the, maybe not a lot, but there's going to be those type cases laying out there all over this town.
Well, they got 15 feet.
Right.
So how do you, and how do you intend on presenting this to, in a form that we can vote on it?
Well, again, it's really up to the, the, you know, council, of course. The way I did it at the planning commission is I took basically the first half of the code and went section by section and said, here's what's changing. You have the red lines, obviously, and if there were any questions involved in that, we discussed them and went. And then at another meeting, we did the next or the other half in that, and then finally had a final meeting to say, all right, we discussed the front, the back, and here we are, are there still any issues in that? Because like I said, we went, we had five meetings at the planning commission in that, and I did the same thing. The first meeting was an overview like I did tonight, and then the next meeting was we're going through section, or chapter, or articles 1 through 4, or 1 through 5.
And that's when you just covered your reds?
Yeah, yeah. And then we literally went like this red line version, went Article 1, and went through it in that, and if there was any questions.
What is the council thoughts? Well, you've already identified, you'd like to go through reds.
Well, yeah, but then also, by, by having multiple meetings on this, you give your citizens an opportunity to call you and address any potential concerns that they may have, you know?
True.
I will say that, you know, as I indicated earlier, the conversations I had with a lot of residents with the changes is very positive, because a lot of them did not understand per current code. They couldn't have animals, the, the only reason they had animals was legal nonconforming. And there were a lot of provisions in here that they had no idea about, and they're like, oh, that's great that we're making it to, you know, be allowed, or, you know, not quite as strict as the current code with a lot of stuff. So there's been a lot of positive feedback so far with a lot of residents I talked to.
Okay. So basically, going through the red line in sequential order and breaking it up into two or three segments is what I'm hearing you kind of propose.
Yeah, because we can over the, over two meetings, basically do half, and then the next meeting do the other half, and then have a last meeting for possible adoption.
All right, thoughts? Anybody?
Do we want to do this as a meeting, or do we want to do it as a workshop? I think we do it as a workshop.
The bottom line is they're both public, so it really doesn't matter.
It's, it's, it's the same amount of time.
We've been doing workshops here in this, yeah, we could do it at 6 o'clock if that's what you mean, instead of 7.
They do just a little bit more time than that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Jeff, Cheryl? I know Councilman Long had, had addressed containers, that's, that's in here, still as an exclusive, excluding containers. I know he had some concern about that, that he previously addressed.
Because the same thing, obviously, this is also the time, right? Even stuff that isn't necessarily red line that I'm proposing to change, if there are any other elements whatsoever in here, now is the time because that's it. The whole document is up for possible discussion or changes.
Okay, all right.
And, and just to add, when I did it at the planning commission, and that's what I'll do, whether workshop or the meeting, I had a PowerPoint that we kind of went through, much like Leroy does and that. So again, we can follow along with the red lines, but also have slides up there to identify what we're talking about.
Okay, let's plan on doing this in two, going through everything in the next two, and we'll do it in workshops at 6 o'clock.
Next five meetings?
Uh, no, two. All right?
Okay.
Okay, that's a whole new-
You going to be here?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, city manager report, item number six. Thanks, Dan.
We have Lieutenant Governor was here yesterday, and we did a podcast with him, and he said some things about Guthrie and tourism and films that we just wanted to share. It's about a minute and a half we wanted to share with you. Fair enough, probably that.
Most towns across Oklahoma, they have no idea the amount of movies and television shows that are filmed right here in Guthrie, America. It's amazing, and we push it all the time with our film office. We push Guthrie. You guys are absolutely on the map when it comes to the film industry across the country and across the world. You guys sell well, and that's why I'm such a believer in our tourism industry as well, because it's the front door to everything else that we want to do. We can get people to Guthrie, they're wowed by Guthrie, and then they may say, I want to relocate to a cool town. And cool factor is real, by the way, folks, you know, that should not be discounted.
You can measure that.
You can absolutely measure it, and what I mean by that really is quality of life.
Sure.
You have that here in Guthrie. If every town did it like Guthrie, we would be the number one tourism state in the country. We really would be. You guys do it right, you play to your strengths, the assets that you have, you stay authentic to who you are. You don't try to create, oh, hey, I love what this state's doing, let's try to do that. No, you're, you're authentic to who you are and play to your strengths. We need more towns really modeling what Guthrie, Oklahoma is doing.
I just thought those were some positive comments of the Lieutenant Governor's impression of Guthrie that would be worth sharing with you all.
I think it was pretty significant that he spent the better part of his day here in Guthrie. I don't think he does that very often in one location. I think that speaks pretty highly, too, of his support.
And according to a text we got from his administrative assistant, he told her he enjoyed every minute that he was in Guthrie.
Clearly, clearly did, yeah, that's great. Anything else, Leroy?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, council comments? Uh, Councilman Buthroyd?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilman Channel?
Nope.
Vice Mayor?
Be safe.
Jeff?
I was able to walk with the Lieutenant Governor yesterday, and it was a great time, and I'll echo everything he said.